I'm sure. Oh, you did?
Ready?
I'm sure if you did, yeah.
Yep.
This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act NJSA 10:4-6 et Sec., notice of which was sent to the record and the Star Ledger and was posted on the municipal bulletin board.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Yeah.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Here.
Councilmember Sims.
Here.
Councilmember Greenman.
Here.
Mayor LaBrus.
Here. Would everybody please rise for the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. No minutes to approve. City manager's report, please.
Thank you, ma'am. First, the Chamber of Commerce and the Main Street Alliance will be meeting on July 29th to discuss the Main Street revitalization update. The Columbus Park grant for the Santa Maria Play Gym has been awarded. Green Street, the Polyfly Towing property, the soil has been tested. We are awaiting the results. The police overtime, $14,000, we had a grant award of $14,000 to cover police overtime. The state housing meeting is scheduled for July 16th at 10:30 a.m. in the council chambers. That's listed on the website, advertised. The intro of the bond ordinance for the HPD, HFD radio consoles will be on the July 21st meeting due to the 4th of July holiday and the bond council not having ample time to put it together. Paving update, Thursday and Friday, we'll be paving Beach Street from Summit Avenue to Tracy Place, weather permitting, and we will next over website and everyone will be notified. Also, I have a statement to be read regarding Mr. Rotino, that he has informed the city he will not be returning to his position as Director of Economic Development, and the city's obligation to compensate him under the payroll has ceased as of July 4th.
Thank you.
That's all I have, ma'am.
Okay. Let's move on, Resolution 234-14.
This is final adoption of ordinance number 22-2014. The Capitol Ordinance of the City of Hackensack in the County of Bergen, New Jersey authorizing an ordinance for the purchase of telecommunication equipment for the police department and a metal detection system for the municipal port building and appropriating $212,000 and providing that such sum so appropriate shall be raised from the fund balance of the general capital fund of the City of Hackensack. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. This time, if anybody would like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come to the podium, state your name and address to the clerk. Seeing none, motion to close.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
And now we need a motion on the ordinance itself.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack, County of Bergen, and State of New Jersey that ordinance number 22-2014 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Resolution 235-14.
Is a resolution awarding security cameras to Packet Talk? I'm not sure how to pronounce that, Jim.
Yeah.
Packet Talk through state contract.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 236-14.
Is a resolution authorizing a leave of absence without pay for 37 days for Alexis Summer Abdunor Keyboarding Clerk One beginning June 30th, 2014, and ending August 5th, 2014.
Okay, before we move forward, we need to change the whereas interim city manager.
Okay, except that it was granted by him, wasn't it? I mean, I don't know that we change it.
Was it granted by him?
It was, because I got it when he was still...
Okay, that's fine, then leave it. May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 237-14.
Is a resolution authorizing cancellation of Sewerville.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 237, I'm sorry, 238-14.
Is a resolution authorizing award of bid to Golden Pub Inc. and 295 Polyfly Realty LLC for the purchase of the property consisting of the vacated portions of Kip Street and Lodi Street and authorizes the city to enter a contract for sale of real property for the purchase price of $150,000.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 239-14.
Is a resolution authorizing raffle licenses for the Village School Parents Association in Waldwick, New Jersey.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 240-14.
Is a resolution authorizing computer purchases to Dell Marketing LP through the state contract.
Motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 241-14.
Is a resolution authorizing a 911 system upgrade to Goose Town Communications through state contract.
May I have a motion, please?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 243-14.
240, 214.
I'm sorry, 240, 214, sorry.
This is a resolution authorizing the renewal of liquor licenses.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
This is an introduction of ordinance number 23-2014, an ordinance authorizing the City of Hackensack's sale of the vacated portions of the public rights of way identified as Kip Street and Lodi Street to Golden Pub Inc. and 295 Polyfly Realty LLC pursuant to private auction.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 23-2014 as introduced is now passed on first reading and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on July 21st, 2014 at 8:00 p.m. or soon thereafter as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the City Council, and at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that City Clerk B. and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading and of the time and place when and where that ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Okay. Resolution 244-14.
Is a resolution authorizing Bergen County Open Space Trust Fund Grant Award for Columbus Park ADA Playground Project.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 245-14.
Is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with the Policemen's Benevolent Association Local Number Nine.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Nay.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 246-14.
Is a resolution for the payment of bills. The current fund is $863,167 and a tenth. Rance is $2,875.56. Public parking system is $15.96. Capital is $513,909.33. Trust account is $12,290.2. Total expenditure is $1,392,257.95. And inter funds and transfers is $165,488.72.
May I have a motion to accept the bills, please?
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Okay. That's pretty quick.
Can I explain how, or can we, we have to wait?
In public.
In public?
After we close the...
Thank you.
Public goes first. May I have a motion, open to the public, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Okay, before we start, I want to, you know, a few ground rules. Let's keep it civil. I don't want to see name-calling. If I hear name-calling, I'm going to hit the gavel. If it continues, you're going to be asked to leave. Let's play nice, guys, all right? Yes, sir.
Don't call me sir, that's name-calling. Hi, how are you doing?
How are you, sir?
First of all, you want me to answer? What's the story with Marie Pataglia?
I defer to the city manager.
Mr. Sorokin, currently I'm dealing with a change in Labor Council. If you would give me just a little bit more time to give you an answer on that. You're mad goodwill, I will hold my tongue for a while. I appreciate that, sir. Now, I was expecting perhaps since we're into July and the professional service contracts you awarded last year expire, although I guess they're held over. But there were no changes tonight that I see on the docket, and I think it's time to talk about the city attorney. So young Mr. Morris here tonight, I'm sorry, Mr. Screvo isn't, because most of what I'm going to say really is directed towards him. At the end of May, our city attorney's firm hit the magic half-million-dollar fees on their way to the $600,000 rate that has been predicted all along. Are they worth it? Well, I started off, I could have done the dirty dozen, I could have done the top 10. Time constraints, I'll just take a category for each. First of all, cutting corners. Remember ironically, the Rotino ordinance, the redevelopment czar, whatever you would call it, do you remember that that which you introduced was not that which you passed? Do you remember that? Anybody remember that? That the form you put in was introduced was not the same. If you want me to show it to you, the appointing authority got messed up, remember? It shouldn't have been the council, remember the change? But you look at your records, you look at the video, no motion to amend. It was an abortion from day one, and so it happened. But your city attorney didn't open his mouth at the meeting, and it went through. The Tagwarian appointment clearly violated pay-to-play. No reason it should have. You could have done one more request for qualifications for one day, and you would have saved it. Instead of the double talk that Screvo gave you here about, well, he's going to be a judge, and that's rule. He contributed to your campaign, it's a professional service contract, clearly violated. Does it matter? Am I harping on minutia? No. Ask, I saw more dog here before. Someone comes to the court in front of Tagwarian on his third DWI, facing six months hard time. If I'm that attorney and I find out Tagwarian got appointed in an illegal way, I'm going to raise it. Think about it. Take care of it, fix it. It's your anniversary, do it right this time. The Oprah debacle. Kathy, maybe it was a lesson learned. I stood up here March 4th. Jason stood up here. Don't do it. Kathy's giving you bad advice, it's going to be slapped down by the court. That's my words, go look at the tape. $20,000. Lesson learned, only if you guys want to reach into your pockets and pull out $4,000 apiece to replenish the $20,000, urinate it away, taxpayers' money. Wrong. Finally, you need to be careful here, because they're not doing you any service. I'm directing this to you, John, and you, Mr. Sims. You voted on November 25th on the infamous SRO agreement, settlement. Big issue about the past, the prior approved non-payments. John, your wife is a full-time employee of the district. Mr. Sims, you're a full-time employee of the district. You had conflicts of interest. Where was the city attorney to tell you, do not participate in this? We're not getting the dime, the buck, the bang for our many bucks. You better take this into consideration, straighten it out, get us people who care and actually open books, and don't send a JV. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members.
Evening.
Frank Alvalino, Hackensack, New Jersey. I got a little different delivery than Rick has. My questions are on the sick policy for the city. I noticed on tonight's resolution you authorized a leave of absence. I don't remember seeing that from Mr. Rotino. Was his sick time leave of absence ever authorized by the city?
Wasn't there yet? Well, let the city manager...
I don't recall a leave of absence.
I don't believe he applied for a leave of absence.
I don't believe so.
Could I direct the mayor and council and the city manager to tread lightly? Any questions regarding Mr. Rotino? That's active litigation, and we should parse our words in regards to that matter.
And I guess my next question was, is he being paid? And did he submit a doctor's note? And I don't think that's going to be answered.
I believe Mr. Coster answered the pay.
We just answered that. He's no longer being paid as of July 4th.
That's correct.
Yes, but while he was on sick leave, was he paid?
You can answer that.
Yes, well, he was paid using his sick time.
How much sick time does he accrue? You have to excuse me, I got a cough drop, I have a cough.
Me too.
He's only been an employee from August 1st, correct?
That's correct.
2013. How many days do you accrue in this less than a year?
You accrue your first year one day, for vacation one day a month, sick time one day a month until your, the first year, as of January 1st, then you get your 15 days of sick time, and so on.
So he didn't have, how many days has he been out?
I don't have a file in front of me, as far as a personnel file or...
Okay, that's my concern, if we pay this gentleman for doing nothing. I'm sure no one wants to do that in any organization. Thank you.
Sir, I'm Mr. Mayor, council...
Sir.
Counselor, Debbie, I don't remember your name, but hello, hello to you anyway. I woke up this morning to the Bergen record, and under the locals section, in the lower right-hand corner, it said Hackensack and former chief Ziza settles suit. In that, mayor, you're quoted by the paper as saying, "I don't know how much they paid", LaBrus said. They just wanted to make it go away, so they reached a settlement.
Mm-hmm.
You don't know how much that settlement cost.
No, there hasn't been, I don't think the settled agreement has been paid. I defer to legal on that. You can explain it.
That was signed by the judge on July 1st, that is July the 9th.
The former insurance carrier for the City of Hackensack, who was the carrier at the time of the allegations of Mr. Ziza's complaint, made exercise their contractual right to settle the lawsuit. They are paying with insurance funds to settle the lawsuit, they have a contractual right to do the same. At some point, I would assume the agreement will be a public document for dissemination, but I believe it is being negotiated between Mr. Ziza's attorney and the attorney for the insurance carrier presently.
Yeah, well, I think the contractual obligation which leg of insurance was to have a cap of $250,000. Anything under $250,000 is paid by the city.
Well, that's a self-insured retention, sir, but they have the right to come in and settle even if the self-insured retention has not been drawn down.
But shouldn't the mayor or some of the council people know exactly what was settled? How much was settled for?
Well, they will at some point, but the mayor and council have no say in this. It's the carrier exercising a contractual right. They have no say.
They have no say. That's because the council has a position of, we want to settle everything, we don't want to fight.
That is not accurate at all. It's the carrier, I believe, has a long protracted history with the City of Hackensack and wants to resolve all pending cases that they're on the hook for.
Just say that slowly, I, my hearing aids, the battery sometime.
The insurance carrier...
One second, one second, let me see if this works better.
Try that, can you hear?
Is that all right?
No, my hearing aids work better. Say it slowly, that's all.
The insurance carrier exercised its right to settle, because I believe they are trying to resolve all pending claims involving the City of Hackensack that they underwrote.
Regardless of the cap in the contract.
That is correct.
So they can arbitrarily just say, well, sure, we'll pay this $100,000 or $200,000, the city doesn't have to worry about it.
That's a contractual right, yes.
All right. Do you have the same deal with selective, or you have a different carrier this year?
We have the Jif now.
Who do you have?
South Bergen Jif. We no longer have selective.
And that was your choice or their choice?
That was the last council's choice, and we stayed with them.
So when do you think that you'll find out now that you have to sign off on this?
Well, the mayor and council are never going to sign off on it.
Do they? They don't sign off at all?
No. On Ziza v. Farioli now.
Okay. Thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
Good evening, Earl Warden, E.B. Terrace, Hackensack. Mr. Mayor, I left here after the last meeting a little, I don't know, dumbfounded. You guys ran as Citizens for Change, you had a long list of things that you were going to change about this city, and one of them was going to be how you were going to cut litigation costs and put a cap on lawyers, but you recommended me to go get a lawyer to sue you. I just found that a little ironic, how on one side you're going to cut litigation costs, and on the same note, you recommended me to go find an attorney. I understand what you're saying. I'm saying that, to say this, that for, to, the right thing with me, it's not even worth the lawyer's time and money. I wouldn't even get nothing out of it. I've had time to go, because you keep telling me about this form of government, under this form of government. So I started looking up this form of government. It says that the city manager works at the behest of the mayor and council. So I looked up the word behest, because it's not a word I use all the time. It says on command or directive. So in other words, the city manager works under your command or your directive. Okay? So be the case, and I'm sure at times you are abreast of what the city manager is doing or you direct the city manager on what to do, even on, I'm sure, personnel issues. I, in turn, seeing I have a lot of time to sit at home, I keep beating this brow about what it's doing, what is owed me, and at your command or directive. Can you please ask the city manager to please, maybe he should go through it, maybe I missed something, but in none of the city's language, be it under ordinances, procedures, in our city employee handbook, under, I also got copies of the union contracts, is there any mention of forfeiture of sick pay when you resign? It only mentions it if you are terminated. I was not terminated from my job. I eventually resigned due to the fact that I could never get a hearing in a timely manner. You know, I was suspended for three months without even a hearing, you know, which is totally absurd, but that's something for another day and time. But I still say that you guys have a double standard, because there is no language written anywhere besides if you are terminated, do you forfeit any days that are considered earned? Your vacation time and your sick pay that you earn over the years that you work are considered earned. And in no language, I was on the city's website all day under ordinances, procedures, everything. I got the city handbook, because I was an employee. I also have, like I said, copies of the contracts, and in nowhere does it state that you forfeit. It's only done to the people that you so choose to. I think it's like an unwritten rule that you guys do, like one of those, you know, this is what we've been doing, how we've been doing, and nobody's questioning it. But guess what? I'm one who's questioning it, because you stand for something or you fall for anything. And I've been wrong, so I'm definitely standing up, because wrong is wrong and right is right. And I keep standing here for what I feel is right. I keep coming here, coming here, saying the same thing over and over and over, and it[1525.62] saying the same thing over and over and over, and it seems like I'm falling on deaf ears, though. Am I right that the city manager works at the behest of you guys? Is that correct?
The city manager takes, can take recommendations from the council, but he doesn't have to do what they say. Absolutely not. He's an administrator. We're legislators. We make policy, enforces policy.
So in the terms that I saw that said that the city manager works at the behest of the mayor and council, that that's, that was wrong, that?
It's the way...
Because the word "behest" says "under command or directive."
The definition, it basically says the city manager and the clerk work parallel, the city manager and the clerk work parallel together for the council at their behest. It doesn't mean everything we tell them to do, or tell the city manager to do, is in a direct order. I can't, if I tell him to do something illegal, for instance, he certainly shouldn't follow through with that.
And vice versa, correct? If he's doing something that is not right and is wrong, should it not be corrected by you guys?
We don't, we don't...
Just like he did not tell you to do something wrong, should you not, in turn, if you find him doing something wrong, correct him?
If I found him doing something wrong, I would correct him, yes. And I will, again, I will look into it.
This is my fourth time coming up here telling you I've been being wrong since I've been, well, since I was suspended, and then since I have since resigned in April. I'm still being wrong. And for the, like I said, said once before, I wasn't high on the payroll. I'm not looking at hundreds of thousands, even tens of thousands of dollars on what is owed. It's a simple amount. It's an amount so low that I can't even get a lawyer...
I will, I will address the city manager myself and go over your case again, if he wants to discuss it with me. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Good evening. Jared Wexler, Byrne Street, Hackensack. Mayor and council, your group calls itself Citizens for Change, but have things changed for the better? As we've reached one year of this administration, let's recap the change brought about by you. You've gutted City Hall and the city of the most senior and experienced staff while rewarding your campaign cronies, all in the hopes of a pipeline to Trenton that never materialized. At least the governor won't be snarling traffic leading to the Court Street Bridge. You ran on a platform of transparency, but pure transparency only applies to those who are not political enemies, as Oprah requests were only complied with after a judge's order. Following this order, in the newspaper, Mrs. Canestrino implied that the denial was political in nature. And here we are at year two. You can no longer blame your political enemies for your failures, nor can you blame those who helped you to ride into office like heroes on white horses and then turned on you when you opened your eyes to what was really going on. Well, Mr. Mayor, you have three years to go. The question is this: Who is in charge? Is Senator O'Toole still calling the shots, or are you going to stand on your own? Will we hire a new city manager, which will be your fourth in just your short tenure? One thing is for certain, the legal fees will not recede anytime soon. As we sift through the rubble that has left after your first year, let's see what year two brings. Thank you.
I'm Richard Serbo, Spring Valley Avenue, Hackensack. And I just wanted to ask if I read the paper correctly today, that our former city police chief, who is still under house arrest, I think?
Correct.
Won a settlement against Hackensack that we're going to, we're going to pay out to them. Okay. Did I read that correctly?
There was an article in the paper stating that today. Yes, there was.
Okay, okay. I, I'm wondering if, does Hackensack win any cases that, you know, we've heard about lawsuits?
Again, I'll defer to the city attorney to explain...
Does it win any cases against, you know, I've heard about lawsuits now for many years. Are we winning any cases? Does anyone win in court? You know?
That's a difficult question to answer, but on the, I think I went into the Zisa v. Ferrioli litigation at length. The insurance carrier exercised its contractual right, came in and settled the case. The city is not funding that settlement. It's not ratifying that settlement. The carrier, and most carriers, when they issue insurance policies, have that right to come in, step in, and address the risks they're taking on.
So our city attorney argues for the city. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Also, Mr., this Rotino flap, I guess I could call it, all I heard and all I do is read the papers, and I read that he wanted to stand his ground on the cap of increases, and he was excoriated for it, and then, you know, we didn't hear much else about that. So I wanted to know if that's correct also. Is that correct?
Which cap are you talking about now?
He stood supposedly against the cap, which I think the state imposed on increases, correct?
Correct.
Through the chair, please.
Incorrect? Okay. Those are my, those were my first two questions. I just want to start by saying last week, I think it was, that I commend Kathy for showing some humility when she said that she's still learning and that she was fooled by an employee, and I think that shows courage, and I like that. Mr. LeBrosse also made a comment in the paper about all this, you know, back and forth, and he said that it was just democracy. And I just wanted to mention that there's less and less democracy, okay? There's really, I mean, there's no direct democracy. We had no say in anything, okay? I mean, you know, we're handed a slate of candidates. You're elected, and you make all the decisions. So, you know, what is, where's the democracy? Can we, is there, is there...
No, I definitely believe in democracy. I mean, somebody, somebody has to be up here. I mean, that's just a fact.
So that's democracy?
Well, the fact that we get to, every, as Americans, we get to go to these meetings. We get to express our opinions. We get to be...
All right.
Have our voices heard, and sometimes they're listened to. They're always listened to, and but, and our decisions are based on things we hear out there. I mean, no doubt about it.
Okay. I just think there should be more referendums. I think the public should be more involved. So the word "democracy" is, should be defined, okay? Also, you came and won an election on basically a reform agenda, correct? And reform is synonymous with change. So let's change. Let's make some changes. I mean, why do we have to stick with all the old, you know, club rules, okay? Why do we need a city manager? It's nothing personal to Mr. Costa.
It's our form of government. It's mandatory.
Why can't we change the form of government?
It's possible, but it would be, it would be, it would be, yeah, it could be done. You would need a referendum and a vote to do it, sure.
Yeah, you know, maybe the name Hackensack's holding us back. Why don't we call it River City? You know, other towns have changed their names, or, you know, something else.
I like, I love our name.
You do?
Absolutely.
Indian River?
Whether Billy Joel knocked it or not, I love the, I love the name.
Okay, all right. One last thing I wanted to mention was, I was reading about liquor licenses, and there seems to be quite a few that have been pocketed for a long, 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 long time. Now, what's the story on that? I mean, can they just accrue in value and just, they can be held and wait for some corporate entity to purchase them?
I'm not sure on the time limitation of holding a pocket license, as long as you're paying your yearly liquor license fee.
So you can hold on to it and sort of let it increase in value like property?
Sure. It's like a bond, kind of, yeah. Absolutely.
Okay, so you can wait for sort of Houston's to come and buy up your license?
Absolutely.
Very interesting. Okay.
Your time is up, Mr. Serbo.
Yeah, okay. I just, I think it flies in the face of competition. I think it quells competition, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, good evening.
How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good. Could you give your name and address to the clerk, town to the clerk, please?
Sure. My name is Yisara Downs. I live at 383 Parker Avenue in Hackensack, New Jersey.
Thank you.
I'm here tonight to bring forth a few issues that my family and a couple of our neighbors are having, are having at the moment. It all started for us, we currently live at 383 Parker Avenue, with a fence that separates our backyards to our neighbor, 377, Mrs. De Pasqua. And October 2013, we received a violation of code saying that we had to repair this fence. And my family, who stay on top of everything, immediately went to the building inspector, spoke with Mr. Glenn Zimbraski, and he, and he ruled in favor that the fence didn't belong to us because we were able to show him the original deed when we purchased our home in 1991. This is literally falling apart because it's so original. He said, "Not a problem. I see your original survey. This fence doesn't belong to you." And anyone who's ever put up a fence knows that if you build a fence, the constructed side, or some may call it the ugly side of the fence, is going to be facing your property because you built it. And the pretty side of the fence is going to face the neighbor, which is clear in this case, and I have pictures to prove it and all. So he said, "Don't worry about it. You're fine." Okay. In June 2014, a couple months ago, about a month ago, we received a card from Mr. Borelli saying we needed to contact him. And once again, expeditiously, we contacted him and said, "Okay, what's the problem?" He said, "Well, it's in regards to this fence." We said, "Okay, we thought we already squashed this issue. We already spoke to Mr. Zimbraski. He told us the fence did not belong to us. Don't worry about it." He said, "Well, you know, unfortunately, your neighbor presented a newer survey that says it's yours," which I don't really understand how a newer third-party survey can hold up to my original survey. It doesn't even have our names on it. It has the previous owner's name on it. So I said, "Okay, so what can we do?" My family and I, what can we do? Because we're all about rectifying issues in a calm manner. We just want to live peacefully. What are our options? And basically, what it boiled down to was remove the fence, because it's just, it's creating a lot of havoc. It's going to keep ongoing and ongoing. Your best bet is to just remove the fence. And I was really disheartened by that response. And the reason why I was disheartened by that response, because the way it came off is...
Was that from Mr. Borelli, Ms.?
Yes.
Thank you.
It came off as, "Don't bother, because you're not going to be able to fight, so just remove it." And my father, who's 67 years old, one day had to sit there and take down the fence, and that upset me. So for me, I'm here tonight because the issue is not even about this fence. I'm over the fence. We've already taken it down. There's no more fight. The issue I'm having is our neighbor, Mrs. De Pasqua, who's on the planning board. We feel that she uses, we feel that she uses her familiarity with you guys and her decorum with you guys to kind of take advantage of us. I'm here with not only my family of 383, if you guys can please rise. I'm also here with the neighbors of 375, 380, and members of 340 who couldn't be here tonight due to work obligations. We're pretty much here to say, we're coming to you guys because we feel helpless, because at any moment, she can just go to the city, file a complaint, and we have no voice. It's like we can't even fight. We tried, we tried. I know they have tried. They've dealt with many issues far greater than our fence. Trust and believe, way more than our fence. But I'm coming to you because we feel like we have no voice. All we want to do is just live in peace. We pay our property taxes on time. We have no problem paying them on time. We pay our bills. We've all spent numerous thousands and thousands of dollars upgrading our homes, siding, roofing, windows, driveways, steps, sidewalks, all to not only bring up the property value of our home, but to uplift each other's homes, because that's how we're all based. But when you have someone picking and picking and picking, it makes it very difficult to live comfortably. All, I don't mind that she is involved. I commend it to coming to this meeting. This is the first time I've ever been to one of these meetings. I have no problem with you being involved in your community and wanting to be active. All I am asking is that you do not use who you know against us, because we want a fair shot, too. And I know, trust and believe, I know that standing here tonight may open a big can of worms, because we all got to leave here and go back home and rest peacefully. But I do not want any type of revenge or retaliation for me speaking out tonight, because all I want is for my family, who worked so hard, along with the rest of the neighbors, to just leave peacefully. Because it seems like at a snap of a finger, everyone just comes to her aid, and here we are saying, "We, we got violations for things that don't even exist." And how absurd is that to say, "Okay, you have three, four steps at the end of your house. Put a railing up, and we only have one step." It's become too much. And I'm here tonight on behalf of my neighbors, and because they're such hardworking people, I don't want to see them truly unhappy to come home because they don't know how to fight. So I'm here speaking on their behalf. Something needs to be done, because at the end of the day, I just want us to all to be able to come home and live peacefully. I don't want to have to worry that when I leave here even tonight, that tomorrow, or in a month or now, or in a week from now, it's going to be like a witch hunts again, all of us. And next thing you know, violations are going to pop up, and it's becoming an issue. I just want peace. So I'm not sure what can be done, but I just want peace. It's, it's really disheartening. And, and this is definitely, definitely no disrespect to you, Mr. Mayor, at all, but I need you to truly understand where I'm coming from. It's disheartening when I'm on Facebook and I see a message that says, "This one's for you," and it's a picture of a BMW with a fire hose going through the window because you've restriked the fire hydrant across the street from where I live.
Right.
To me, you know what that makes me feel like? It makes me feel like, wow. Now, yes, I agree that parking at the fire hydrant is wrong. I am all with you.
I agree too.
I agree. But then, yeah, don't do it. That's fine. And if you care to respond, you can definitely come up here.
Your time, Ms., your time is up. Your five minutes was up about three minutes ago. I let you go past.
Okay. Thank you for hearing me out. I really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Good evening. Kathleen Salvo. Just to not side with her, but put a little information on this young lady who just spoke. We have a dysfunctional building department. I've been saying it for the last couple of years. We have a dysfunctional property maintenance department, and the building department really is, is really, really, really in need of help, and we need professional people there. There are certain codes. The codes don't lie. We go by the book. Whatever the code says, that's what we do. So if the code says you're in violation, you are in violation. But somehow, they don't know how to interpret it. They don't know how to read it. I have property maintenance issues all the time in my, in my neighborhood. Everything is a disaster. They don't give any summonses out. If they do, they never go to court, and we have a lot of problems with that. And I've been, I've been asking you to please get us some professional people in the building department, so we wouldn't have scenarios like this come about. They give, they give summonses for things that don't exist, and for things that do exist, they don't do anything. So I'm asking you, and I told you way from the beginning, a year ago, that we need to get professional people in this building department to do, to move on. You've been here a year. We, and we know you had your heart in when you, when we voted for you, and we still believe in you. But we expected some change tonight. We thought that you would clean house. I mean, getting ready to city manager, I thought we would see a new city manager by now, because every day we wait to appoint somebody, we're having, we have problems. And we need a real city manager that's experienced and knows, knows what they're doing to, to, to rule, to run the city. And with a good city manager, we wouldn't have problems in the building department, because you would go to the city manager, have, have had in the past, and he would take care of it, like when Mr. LaCava was here. You'd go there, tell Mr. LaCava what happened, it would be cleaned up. The last city managers we had for the last eight years, it's been, it's been a disaster. We need a good city manager. I agree with Mr. Sorkin. We need professional legal counsel. We are not getting here from this group. From day one, they're not in our league. They don't know, you do not know Hackensack. You do not know our background. We deserve something better. I suggest you start looking for somebody, somebody to, to replace them. A good CFO, good, good city clerk, we did, that's two out of so many. But roll your sleeves up. You've been here a year. You, we know you made a mistake, but what are we going to do to move on? We need you to work together. I feel like I'm, I'm, I'm your child, and I have parents that are divorcing each other, and you can't get along, and I'm being punished because of, you can't, you can't get along. You're not doing whatever you're not doing. And I feel like I'm, I'm the victim here. Thank you for the cameras. They were a long time coming. We did have an incident last week that it wasn't too happy about. Had we had the cameras, that wouldn't have happened. Thank you for updating finally the 911 system that we need, also for the safety of the city and for the police contract that was, was long in coming. Please clean house. Please start working together. Your main goal is our safety and concern for us. So try to work towards that goal and put all the other stuff aside. And you all had good meetings when you came in. I don't know what happened. But we still believe in you, and I still think there's time. But please, get a new city manager. We should, we should have one tonight. We should have had somebody sitting there tonight. And I don't understand how Mr. Costa does not know how many days Anthony had off, when you're allowed one day per month for sick, one day for vacation, and he, he exceeded all those days. So I don't know how you don't have, you don't have a calendar of what happened.
If I had the file in front of me, I could answer you, but I don't. It's a personal issue.
Well, we asked you this three, this has been asked three times for you.
The full accounting was given to the mayor and council.
Okay, three times we have asked you this, and you have not come up with an answer. It's not hard. It's not hard arithmetic. It's only like a year. So two times 12 is what, 24? Thank you.
Evening, Mayor.
Evening.
Jason Undermacher, 235 Prospect Avenue. Let me first start by saying I'm glad that the contract with Local Nine has been resolved, despite Ms. Greenman's best efforts. They do a great job and it deserves our utmost respect and appreciation. Please, the following is directed towards Ms. Greenman. First of all, you missed a June 26 meeting. That makes three meetings in six weeks you missed. I'm sure you'll say you were sick again, which makes it a good thing you're on our health insurance plan worth $25,000 a year. But my guess is you missed the last one to get out of what would have been a very controversial vote for you. You're taking $10,000 a year from us in our game health insurance on our dime. The very least you could do is show up. After my last comments towards you, I truly had no intention of focusing any further sentiments to you, as I believe I had made my point over the course of that meeting and the previous two meetings. However, during your comments at the end of the June 24 meeting, I was unequivocally called a bigot and a racist by you. Your comments entirely misstated what I had said the night before at the COW meeting. Ms. Greenman, you stated that I said that Hispanics, African-Americans, and immigrants did not have a place in the city or a place in public service. You cited the demographics of the city, which you probably got off Google or Wikipedia, and incidentally, if you can Google that information, you may want to also Google Amarado, Rotino, and Catania. Unlike you, I did not have to Google the city's demographics. I learned them firsthand in classrooms, parks, recreation programs, and my friends' home in each of our neighborhoods. In the last couple of years, through two political campaigns and my time in the public eye, some of the very people in this room, whether sitting on that dais or right behind me, have called me a puppet, a stooge, corrupt, an opportunist, and a thief. And others have been less kind. I have been the subject of fodder on different internet forums and the subject of cartoons on a local block. I have taken none of this personally, as I'm an adult, and I knowingly put myself in this fishbowl. I certainly have never cried to the police department about it. And to be honest, I get a good laugh at some of it, especially their cartoons, and I tried to learn something from even the harshest of criticisms. To clear up your delusion, I said that you're not a Hackensack person. I'm not at all surprised that you do not know what that means, because you need to be one to understand it. You have never served this community in any capacity before July 1, 2013, and let's be honest, you have not served it since. That undisputed fact has nothing to do with you being an immigrant or anything at all to do with this city's African-American or Latino communities, both of which only enrich this city. A Hackensack person knows that the only colors that matter are blue and gold, a reference I do not expect you to understand. Look to your right. Look behind me. Look at the police officers you continue to offend right through this evening. Not all of us have had the good fortune to be born here, and I do take pride in that. Some, however, were not born and raised here, but they chose to not only make their homes here, but made a conscious decision to raise their own families here. I could think of no better example of not having to be born and raised here in order to be a Hackensack person than Tom Delatorre. I know you don't know who that is. Go Google him. He was not born or raised here, but to this day, he is one, one of, if not the most beloved and respected people in the history of this city. After 40 years as an educator... After 40 years as an educator, he furthered his service by sitting on that dais. Yet another reason a lot of our stomachs turn at the thought of you sharing the same title as him. See, we don't care where you are from or what color you are. It's what you do here, once you get here, that determines if you're a Hackensack person. You were along for the ride on your campaign ticket and were handed a golden opportunity to become one. You have failed miserably. You want to attack me? You want to take issue with anything I said? I come to this podium frequently enough. I have been quoted accurately in a number of newspaper articles. I stand by everything I have said. So please, have a shred of intellectual honesty and attack me over something I've actually said or did. Do not invent things.
Thank you. Next, please.
Peace and blessings to everyone. Before I begin, what I want to say, and that's mostly about the group homes, I want to thank everyone for their prayers for my mother, Virginia Manning, who has been sick for quite a while, and she is doing better. So I want to thank everyone who has had my mother in thought and in prayer. I appreciate it. I just want to speak briefly about the parks that I am liaison for. The Anderson Street Park is up and running well. People are enjoying the park, having picnics, blankets, and their families out there. Second Street Park, or Carver Park, as we call it in my hood. The basketball games are going, and the two parks that I monitor are really beautiful. I want to speak briefly about the group homes. I had missed quite a few meetings because I'm caring for my sick mother, but I was here a couple of meetings ago, and they were talking about, I believe, group homes. Many people don't know, since 1992, I've been doing group homes. You would think with my seven children and 10 grandkids, I was running an illegal group home, but it is my home. Fairmount Section is one of the oldest neighborhoods that has had group homes, and there's still quite a few over there. And a lot of us do respite for each other with our children. I wanted to let you know, I don't know if many of you watch TV, but there's a show that comes on called The Forsters. It comes on Mondays. I'm not sure of the time. It's about a family that takes care of multicultural children. They're a couple. One, she's a teacher. The other one, she's a police officer. These officers that are asking for raises, I just want to go into this from one subject to another. I'm in a lot of cities with at-risk children. I won't say the cities. But when I leave to go into my family's home, when I get out my cars or my car to go into their home, sometimes I don't know whether to get out, stay ducked down in my truck, or run into the home. They're war zones. Hackensack has been blessed to have a group of officers, and I'm not speaking for all of them because there's some that don't even deserve a raise. But for the most part, they have organized and kept this city safe from gangs. I don't know if you've ever been in war zones before, and I'm not talking in the Middle East. But when you're not able, you have to make a decision whether to get out your car with your children or stay in the car or try to back up and leave. That's a problem. The officers do deserve, in my opinion, a raise if there can be a vote that way. But that's just my opinion because I'm not always here in flowy, busy, ease, and Hackensack. I'm in the Essex County, Passaic County. My children come from all over the state, and the stories that they tell me and the children and lives that have been lost because there's really no great police protection under Mike Madaga. There's been a lot of improvement. I've seen some of my own family members go to jail. But after warning and after talking to them, if they don't take heed, then that's just the way it's going to have to go down. So I just wanted to mention that. And I just wish we could all just get along and move forward. I agree a lot with what the community has said. I was one of your biggest supporters during the election year. But I do agree a lot with the community. There's a lot going wrong, but there's a lot that can move forward and go right. We can't always just go backwards. We have to focus on the better. And you guys have admitted that there's been a lot of wrong, a lot of mistakes and errors. And I think that I commend you for that also. But we have to move forward. I'm still looking forward to our multicultural center, and hopefully with this newfound money that we have now, we can work towards getting that multicultural center and that community pool. We need it for our children, for all of our community, and our senior citizens. And I hope we sincerely take this to heart, Mr. City Manager, and try to work on this because a lot of people have had a lot of good ideas. And I would like to hear at the next meeting moving forward what we can do to get on track with that. We deserve it. Thank you.
It's Stewart, Third Street, Hackensack. I come to you regarding the flooding on Third Street coming from Quail Heights. I've come here numerous times over the 16 years that I've lived on Third Street. I've been told numerous times that they would come out and have a city inspector come to review the property. I've come here when they have thrown snow over the side of the parking garage. And like I said, 16 years, I've come here and nothing has been done about it. Recently, I called because I sent a video to the city manager regarding the waterfall that comes over the parking garage at Quail Heights. And it was addressed. I was told that a city, I guess it's the construction department or building department or whatever, was sending an inspector out to look at the property when it's raining and have something to address the issue. That was done. Quail Heights came out and they plugged up the area where the waterfall was coming from. And the next time it rained, it came down from a different site. There are two waterfalls. This is not something new. It's happened over the 16 years. So I'm not putting it at this council. I'm putting it at the last council. And please, now that you're in this seat, please address the problem and correct it. Second, I was standing back there behind Mrs. Nunamaker, and he spoke on diversity. He sits on the Board of Education where there is no diversity. When they run, they don't run with a diverse ticket, rarely. Talk about transparency and openness, there is none. Talk about an attorney who yells at me for yelling out in a meeting. He does it here. And it's a board that has reduced the amount of time that you can speak at a meeting where it used to be three minutes before and three minutes after. It is now three minutes and one minute, not even the total of five that you have here. So when we talk about transparency and openness, it needs to be here, and it needs to be at the Board of Education where Mr. Nunamaker sits. And I just want to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Deborah Keeling Geddes, Hamilton Place. First, I'd like to just say to Mr. Costa, blessings to you in the city manager's seat. Just remember that decisions that you make, just remember, you know, to keep the residents in mind, do the best for the residents, and protect yourself. Second thing I'd like to say is what that young lady from Parker Avenue stated up here is nothing new to me or to you on the dais. Before you put Mr. Pasqua on the planning board, you were quite aware of the issues with her. I personally brought you people who are well-qualified. You put them on the planning board. One wanted to be, I mean, on the zoning board. One requested to be on the planning board, and he should have been on the planning board with his experience. But yet, you put Mr. Pasqua on the planning board. You can't continue to do this just to keep certain people quiet, just to, you know, stop them from whining or whatever. You have to get the right people on these boards. Okay? What these people are experiencing on Parker Avenue, we know about it. You guys know about it. And it's really come to bite you in the you-know-what. So I'm asking you, when her term is up, to please replace her with someone who is highly A few meetings back, a resident was asked to pay $450 for his Oprah request. Yet, there is another resident whose bill, whose tab is running over $15,000 or more since last October with the amount of Oprah requests. The resident who requested, the resident you said he had to pay $450, you know, now there's a lawsuit, and I guess he won it. But yet, with the resident that's topping $15,000, you've said nothing. $450, $15,000. You've said nothing about this. So I know it's their right to get these Oprahs, but there is an abuse of the Oprah request. We know that. But what I'm saying is if you're going to go after one person, you have to go after the other person. Let's just be fair. Thank you.
I'm Regina Depasqua, Parker Avenue. You've heard about me tonight, though, anyway. First, I'd like to address my qualifications. If anybody wants to see my qualifications, I've worked for a zoning attorney for 18 years, did applications, no zoning, backwards and forwards. Okay? If you question my qualifications, I'll give you a resume. Further, it didn't shut me up. I got nothing out of this. It's a volunteer board. I'm not getting jobs for anybody. I am not getting paid. I volunteer my time, and I am qualified for it. You want to question my qualifications? Look in the mirror. As I said, it hasn't kept me quiet. Regarding the police contract, congratulations. About time. I have a question. The 2% cap, I believe, is only on arbitration, not on contract negotiations. Is that correct?
At the time, it was, yes.
At the time, it's changed. There was a gap in the law. There was a gap. There was, I mean, I read, I do a little research, and so that 2% cap, it was not, you weren't being held to it in negotiations. It was for arbitration, just to get that clarified. Okay? It's about time we got cameras down on Hudson Street. I'm very concerned for my friend, Mrs. Salvo. That's kind of scary what happened to her. I am scared. Okay? We need cameras. We need extra eyes. We need more. I'm not saying our police aren't doing well. They just need more. And you're giving them more with the 911 system. They're giving them more. And Mr. Mordaga's doing a fabulous job, and, no, I'm not kissing up. As far as the Oprah, wasn't that being redone? Wasn't it like a committee on the council to redo how Oprah was done? And weren't we redoing it to streamline it and to make it better access? Because the residents deserve access.
Clerk, I mean, to the clerk's office.
I can't hear you.
To the clerk's office, as you know, we've hired another person in clerk's office. It just deals mainly with Oprah requests, and that has helped tremendously.
But why to get detoured to attorneys?
In that case, I think it was for redaction measures at that time. That's what we advised.
Which shouldn't have happened. And who made that decision to detour it?
I would defer to the attorney on that particular one. You want to be a specific?
Was it your office that said?
Are you talking about a specific Oprah request?
The one that cost us $20,000, and we lost the case. Jason Nunamachers.
We advised the clerk that we should look at attorney invoices before they go out to review for attorney-client privilege and also for confidential information concerning personnel matters and redact them accordingly. We attempted to charge a special service charge, and the Bergen County Superior Court disagreed with the position that the city took in that case.
So it was your firm, and you charged us, and we lost, and it was your decision that cost us, your firm's decision, that cost us that money?
It was our firm's request to review the attorney invoices and provide counsel.
Your firm's decision, and you got paid to review, to make those reductions. And we had to pay, and we have to pay the other attorney. Correct?
Mr. Nunamacher's attorney was compensated in that action. That is correct.
We had to pay you to do it, and you were wrong to do it, and we have to pay the other attorney because you were wrong to do it.
Judge Cantillo ruled we are wrong. The League of Municipalities firmly supported us and disagreed with the decision.
Well, Judge Cantillo, League of Municipalities. I'm going with the judge. Thank you.
Steve Gilbert, 304 Clinton Place. I couldn't agree anymore with what Mr. Nunamacher said. All I can say is maybe if he keeps coming and comes more, maybe you guys will spend $400 to make a video calling him a bigot instead of just doing it in a meeting and then putting that out on the internet. Mr. Nunamacher, I know that your family's been here a long time and has been very active. I can't agree with you more on what you said. Next year, my family's actually celebrating 100th anniversary in Hackensack. We are two years short of a Jesus, just two years. And the only colors that we saw in our house were blue and gold, and the only culture that we knew was common. So we are a Hackensack family, and that's why we come, and that's why we talk at meetings, and that's why we care about our city. I'm kind of surprised at Ms. Geddes's comments about Mr. Pasqua, but I guess it is what it is. You know, with the amount of requests for appointments that she put in, I'm surprised that she's at all surprised that Mr. Pasqua Aston was appointed to something. Let's talk for a minute about those Oprah requests and what people have cost us on Oprah requests. January 1, we put in that cap, $15,000 a month. I made a gripe. I said, "Hey, our Oprah request should be subject to that cap. It's general. There's no way that you can say that it's not general routine research." I came, I talked about it. Subsequent to my talking about it again and threatening a lawsuit, Mr. Morris's firm has now put, in the May billing, has now put Oprah back on the general ledger. Yay. The average for the month of May was 23.2 hours spent on Oprah at his billing. That would have been $3,480 in extra billing, and it would have been one of the best months he would have had since January, but the extra billing was gone. So you made a video that said I did $9,000 in legal expenses wasted on Oprah requests. Well, let's look at it. $3,480 in May that was saved on something that I uncovered and came and talked to you about. Let's go back and look. The average was $3,441 per month in extra billing. Let's do the math. I'm a math guy. I like math. $3,480 in extra billing saved in May. January to April, identified $13,725 in extra Oprah bills that were taken off of the general ledger. Let's go back, do the math, and say, "Hey, Mr. Gilbert, $3,441 average a month that we're going to now continue to save for every month that Miguel Roy's firm stays as our city attorney." And to date, that's a two-for-one return on my $9,000 in legal fees. We're going to get that $13,725 back, and I just want to know if Mr. Miguel Roy's firm is going to be writing us a reimbursement check or if we're going to be receiving it as a credit on next month's bill. So maybe, Mr. Morris, if you want to answer that for us. Because you've tacitly acknowledged that it was a problem by putting the May, which was the highest month. It was higher than your average. We put that back on the general ledger. So we're tacitly acknowledging that it's a problem. It's back on the general ledger. So are we going to get back the $13,725 from January to April, or is it going to be a credit next month?
I'm not going to comment on that issue, Mr. Gilbert.
All righty. Two-for-one. It's a two-for-one, and it's going to continue to get better for as long as Mr. Miguel Roy's firm stays as our city attorney. Now, I just want to bring everyone back to an August 14, 2013 email that was sent by Mr. Amarado at 9:19 a.m. In this email, he explains to Ms. Greaman how patronage is not illegal and not wrong as long as you hire qualified people. We saw what we got from patronage. We got Mr. Amarado. We got Mr. Rotino. And I think we all know that they were not exactly qualified to handle the Hackensack matters. He went on to say some other cute little things about the Gilberts having no following. We saw how that turned out. And then ultimately, you'll be elected. And this is the best part. This is the part that I really wanted to point out. Ultimately, you will be elected or not based on the job you do, not on who you hire. You got to fix the streets, collect the garbage, fix flooding problems, and improve services while keeping the taxes reasonable, and voters will be happy. All the other stuff is just insider baseball that the voters don't know or care about. I think that we know from everyone coming and talking about it for months and months and months, they do know about it, they do care about it, and they weren't going to stand for it. We didn't win because of who the ZISA administration hired. We won because of our opponents could not escape the link of the Zisas and because the Zizas hired people who tried to take advantage of the city. And this is the best part. Our job is to broaden our base, get a real political operation going that further marginalizes these people. That should be our goal. And Ms. Greenman, do you remember what you wrote back to Tom? You told him that you agreed. How's that working out? We're here, we care, we're going to continue to care, and we're going to continue to come.
That's wonderful. But I don't know why you addressed us. Can I? No.
You're going to have your time in a-
No, no, I just have a question.
You'll have your time in a second, Ms. Greenman. We're going to close.
Okay. I know why you addressed us about the video. I knew nothing about the video. I didn't make it, didn't know about it was being made, so don't address me about it.
You can take that position.
No, don't, please.
Please, no back and forth. Thank you, Mr. Gilbert.
You want to take that position, that's your position to take.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert.
I have to answer for you.
No, you can have my word then.
Ms. Greenman, please, through the chair.
Peter Marcuszani, 65 Davis Avenue. I haven't heard anything about cars, city cars, tonight, and I know there was a, there was a complaint that we were going to give a constipated city employee a car. And then I, I realized that it was a constable that was going to get a car, so I, I said, never mind, you know, I don't have an issue with that.
Thank you, Peter.
I, uh, I really want to ask about the cameras. I, I know apparently Kathy Salvo had some issues more recently, unfortunately. But is there a plan to put cameras on Hudson? I mean, is there a master plan? Are these video feeds to headquarters? Is this a first installment? How does this work?
Um, do you want to speak about the cameras or I can? Or do you want to address it after you're done or?
I'll address it afterwards.
Oh, okay, sir. The other thing was, and I'm the, yeah, when it comes to legalities, I mean, the redactions, I don't know what a redaction is. I would think that if somebody makes an Oprah request in the clerk's office, that that Oprah request is filled. If it's not acknowledged, then somebody in the clerk's office, I believe, would have to make the decision to pass it on to legal counsel for redaction. As opposed to taking a magic marker and just running a line through every name that's in there and just handing it over for a nickel a page. And I don't want to get into it here in terms of the, the procedure, but I was, I was curious and listening to all these things for the last few months as to how these documents go from the clerk's office to legal counsel for the redactions in the first place, how some documents find their way there. Unless it's only, I think Mr. Morris noted that certainly anything that has to do with, with legal fees-
Right. That's exactly what it was.
-for the lawyers would be redacted. But I'm sure there's other things, other Oprah requests that are made that, that should not be released. There's certain confidential information and certain things that are going to be redacted, names are going to be deleted. And I was wondering how that happens or is that, does Ms. Carlson use her good judgment and say this ought to be passed back to legal?
As a city clerk, Ms. Carlson is well-versed in Oprah and what can and can't be released. There's strict guidelines on, on what you can't release and what you can release.
Yeah. The, uh, just another little, not, not a big deal, but this twice-a-week garbage collection, I did notice that with the, uh, the yard waste, that is now commingled with garbage, I guess. So, that is no longer segregated. I don't know whether that's good or bad for the city. Tipping fees are increased, obviously, where they used to make a pass to pick up yard waste on, on Tuesday mornings in, in-
They still pick-
-the fireman section. Uh, they now pick up garbage on Tuesdays, okay? And the truck makes one pass, in goes the garbage, then goes the yard waste.
That shouldn't be, Mayor, I'll, I'll look into that.
Right, because I, the separate truck comes from mine on Tuesday.
They should be picked up separately.
Yeah. I, I, you know, I thought maybe, you know, I, well-
That shouldn't be happening.
I'm glad I brought it up then.
I'm glad you brought it up.
Because I don't know, uh-
Thank you.
Maybe it's going to cost us more money, maybe we should commingle it. I mean, there's got to be a fine line between tipping fees and commingling yard waste, which is biodegradable, you know, with whether or not you want to send a separate truck to pick it up. The other thing I want to mention, and I'm sure Ms. Greenman is going to have something to say later on, the problem we, we face when it comes to the DPW, when it comes to sanitation, when it comes to the municipal workers' unions, these contracts, nobody pays any attention to them. When it comes to police and firemen, everybody jumps on the bandwagon because nothing is too good for our police and firemen. I don't think there's anybody in this room that would applaud if I said, you know, our cops don't deserve what they have. They do. The, the problem is, is that these are contracts. One of Mr. Rotino's downfalls, and this is really something, and you can say what you want about the guy, good or bad, mostly bad, I'm afraid, is the fact that on numerous occasions, he sat here and disingenuously, if you want to say lie, told the PBA members who had showed up that we're, we're five minutes away from a contract, we're going to meet in the back room, we're going to wrap this thing up. When obviously, and I can see, you know, in my own mind, that with the lapse in the law on the 2% cap in arbitration, that if he held out long enough and that law was passed, which I believe it since was, they could have not negotiated a contract, gone to arbitration and held that increase to 2%. You know, half of us are, you know, we're all taxpayers, you know? We want to see our money well spent. We want to see the cops and firemen get what they deserve. But I think it's very, it's really cruel to say that we're anti-cops because we want to see our tax dollars spent well. And we want to see good contracts negotiated. And hopefully, and I don't know the, the terms of the contract, I was always amazed that police started at 30, 35,000, they can make 100,000 as a patrolman after five years. I said, gee, this is really, what are the steps in this process? They seem to be making a lot of money quickly and then all the overtime. So, there's a lot for taxpayers to think about here. But there should be no mistake that if anybody questions the terms of a contract, and I don't know what they are, but it's certainly more than salary, that anybody is anti-police. We think the world of the police officers in Hackensack. Matter of fact, so much so that we have two of them here tonight instead of one. We, uh, I don't think we should, we should, you know, fall into that trap to say that anybody that questions a contract for the police or firemen who are really our uniformed, you know, heroes, is, is unpatriotic or something. That's not the case at all. Uh, I haven't seen the contract, maybe sometimes I'll take a look at it and see what it is. We're all digging deeper, you know, things are tough all over. We're not getting help from the state or from the federal government, so, uh, but I just want to say that in the year that you guys have been here, and my five minutes is way up, you've made a lot of mistakes, but it's a year and there's a lot of opportunity to move forward. I'm glad you didn't clean house, because if you had cleaned house, you would have hired somebody and you may have made the same mistake by acting too quickly on some of the things you wanted to decide on. If Rotino was hired too quickly, a new city manager may be hired too quickly. I'd rather see you take another couple of weeks, another month, if you have to, make sure you're focusing and zeroing on the right guy. And I don't know how close you are, but we don't need another guy that's not going to do the job. So, keep up the good work. Mistakes are mistakes. We move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mary Gilbert, 304 Clinton Place. I just, this whole thing with the Oprah and the Oprah requests, Mr. Nunamacher and the $14,000, if Mr. Nunamacher had his own PAC, maybe they would have just paid the $450 and we wouldn't have paid $14,000. For Ms. Gettis, she made an Oprah request and I don't know what the gripe is about reimbursed, because she was reimbursed from the Citizens for Change. So, maybe Mr. Nunamacher should get his own PAC because Ms. Gettis definitely got reimbursed through the Citizens for Change PAC for Oprah requests that she's made. That's all I wanted to say.
Anybody else would like to speak? Seeing none, motion to close to the public.
Oh, fair.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrito.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Okay. This time, council would like to speak. Mr. Pataglia.
Well, I just want to say the different departments that are working together, you know, they make a relief for the whole community, a beautiful day, July 4th. We got fireworks, music, that was really an excellent job. Thank you for coming and get home safe.
I'll echo that. The 4th of July, I mean, we really were keeping our fingers crossed all day that the weather would take a turn for the good and it did. And it was a, a great turnout and, and a good night and excellent job, again, by our DPW in getting things together quickly and getting things cleaned up quickly. And I think all, all that was there thoroughly enjoyed the evening. I'm so thrilled that we've settled our PBA contract. I think it was a lot of give and take, but I think we've come to something that's fair for the city and fair for our police department. I just want to reinforce how proud this council is of our police department and the fine job they do each and every day for us here in our city. And we continue to, to appreciate all of your efforts every day. Mr. Sawkin, you talked about, yes, July 1st has come and gone and, and what are we doing about looking at reappointments? Actually, the deadline was today, so all of the resumes have now been secured by our city clerk and are able to be opened today. And we've formed a committee that will go through those and make recommendations to the council. And we're hoping to have all the decisions made by the first council meeting in August. So, that's our process and that's where we are in that process. Now, that does not include the search for the city manager. That has, that's a separate search that is still, you know, being posted out there and is still open for anyone that needs to apply or would like to apply. We're receiving resumes and we'll continue that search and, and, and go in that direction. Mr. Sawkin, I'm not focusing on you, but a couple of questions you asked are kind of things I usually look at. Talking about legal bills from the McElroy firm, I mean, I think we've had this discussion before, you need to realize that that firm has 500, 600, 400 lawyers that are part of that organization?
Uh, 300 or 400.
300, oh, sorry, I was way off. Okay, 300 lawyers that are part of that organization. So, in the past, where our city attorney really was operating at a very small firm and, and all the litigation had to be farmed out to, to multiple different law firms, the McElroy firm is able to use many of their on-staffed experts to come in and, and do a variety of tasks.
I have to first do with that firm.
I'm, I'm just saying-
No back and forth, please.
You, you have to realize that the monies that you're talking about were not just monies for being city attorney. They're monies, monies that have been spent doing various other tasks that in the past had, had been spent through other firms that's been compensated. So, it, it's not kind of a fair comparison, so I just wanted to set the record straight there. Oprah process, Oprah requests, a lot of talk about that tonight. I think that we are, we have been working hard to get a better grip on the Oprah process here. Hiring an, an individual that focuses on that has been a big help. I think that our clerk and, and our Oprah assistant here have been working closely with the law firm to come up with a better way to do that more economically for us. And I think that shows. I think Mr. Gilbert or someone talked about that the bills were getting reduced and I think that's evident by the fact that we're finding better ways to do things more efficiently and more economically. Thanks for coming and have a good evening, everyone.
Dave?
I want to first thank the Five Costa and PBA for selling their differences and getting the contracts settled. Also want to thank DPW on the 4th of July. They did a great job getting the parks ready. Police and the firemen had a great baseball game, softball game, it was run by the police in the last, 75, 70, 11, 12. I want to thank everybody for coming out.
I guess for myself, okay. Well, I want to express thanks to Mr. Marcuszani for standing up and supporting me, I really appreciate it. I want to express support for our police department. Of course, I want to also say that I was terrifically disappointed the way they treated me. I certainly did not deserve it and didn't know why they were behaving this way. Brought it to their attention, wanted to speak to them, they refused to speak to me and so did Director Mordaga. There were some glaring irregularities in the PBA negotiations. Unfortunately, this PBA contract is going to create a problem for us in going out and bonding. And we have to go out and bond first for $10 million this year and probably for another $20 million next year. We had sent a delegation, two people from the council, the CFO and our former city manager to go and speak to the local finance board to ask their advice as to how we can proceed in order to get the best way to, in the best interest on the bonding. And with what we had done now, we're probably not going to be able, we do not have the same, we, we will, we, we're not going to get the same response, I believe, at this point. We had done something here that has put us in a light that's not as-
Explain.
I, I'd rather not go into all of the explanation. I'm hoping, I am hoping it's not going to be as severe. I'm just praying that it's going to make it, that it is going to make it-
Mr. Gilbert, please.
That is going to make it, uh, that is, that is going to make it, that we are not, we're going to make it more receptive to them and give us a, a better interest on the, on the, on the bonds.
Excuse me, but I have to take medicine.
Absolutely. I just wanted to address your, your issues on the Parker Avenue. And I really appreciate you coming because I know that you were very fearful in coming to the council and you expressed it to us.
Excuse me. Excuse me. You are out of line.
Please.
You expressed it to us and you were so fearful.
You are out of line.
I was a taxpayer, I think we have.
You're absolutely correct and I, I really feel fearful.
Ms. Greenman, Ms. Greenman, Ms. Greenman, you're out of line.
You're out of line, it was meant.
You're out of line because you're attacking one citizen through another.
Why?
You're out of line.
You're out of line. You can't do that.
I'm just supporting people. I'm supporting people for coming.
It was a fact.
You're out of line.
Everybody else, I'm supporting people for coming. They were terrified and coming here.
Terrified of a fact, I was afraid it was going to fall on me. They're, but they're terrified.
Please, Ms. The pastor.
No, you don't have to throw me out. I can't listen to her anymore. You, you are beyond, beyond loco.
She has-
Beyond loco.
Enough.
I'm throwing myself out.
The woman had no right to be on the planning-
Ms. Greenman, do you have anything else to say?
Yes. We were advised by our attorneys that she had no right to be on the planning board because her taxes were not paid.
She paid her taxes immediately.
I understand that, but she did not pay her taxes.
I'm going to have to interject. Ms. Greenman, the attorney-client privilege is, is held by the city of Hackensack and we respectfully advise you not to divulge any attorney-client privileges.
Okay, thank you.
What do we think, you might know that?
Yes, she is an attorney.
Enough, please. Thank you.
Sad, sad.
Ms. Greenman, do you finish?
Yes, I am.
One year. Mr. Wexler, where are you? You, there you are. Hey, Jared. It is one year. You mentioned transparency. This, this council has put out more transparency than any council in the past. Cameras, a perfect example. The fact that this room is full, even though we might like it nice for maybe to have three people here like the past council did for four years or eight years in a row, except for a brief period when we had an issue with our police chief, we don't. We actually like to see you, believe it or not. All right? I like participation. I like it whether it's good or bad, all right? Because that's, that's, to me, is democracy. So, as far as transparency, we're getting citizens involved, they're coming to meetings, Please, Mr. City Manager, let's take a look at this Third Street thing. It's been going on and on and on. I listened to it last, you know, we need to get something done there.
I have it in my notes.
The owner of Twelve Heights. Mrs. DePasqua's planning board appointment, she's totally qualified, she's done a good job while she's up there. The fact that Mrs. DePasqua is verbal with her neighbors or has issues that has nothing to do with, this council has nothing to do with the planning board, all right? She was doing it before she was on the planning board, and she continues to do it. That's her business, and that's her right as a citizen. Mr. Cerber, we have made a lot of change. Are you still here?
I'm here.
Oh, there you are. How are you, sir? We've made a lot of change. We've done a lot, right? This council, all right, has fixed things that have happened in the past and will fix things that have happened in the present that we thought was wrong, and we're in the process of fixing it right now. As Mrs. Canestrino said, the deputy mayor said, all the RFQs that were out for the different professional services should be in, or we're in today, hopefully. Today was the deadline or the 9th?
It was today, 10 a.m.
It was today. So now, the committee is formed, we're going to go out and, they'll look at them, and then they'll come back with recommendations to the whole council, and we'll sit and go over those. Bear with me, folks. Yes, and the cameras down at, long-awaited cameras down in the First Ward. As you know, that's been a high-crime area. That's probably, that and Anderson Street are the two worst crime areas in the city. Hopefully, shortly after these are up, we can move forward to put them on Anderson Street. This would be a big help to our police department, and actually, they deter crime, because a lot of times when they see there's cameras there and they can't get to them, they go about their business somewhere else, hopefully in another town, not ours, but hopefully in no town, really. Appointments, you know what? Mr. Taggvorian, to me, has done a good job. I can appreciate what you're saying. You know, we went on the guidance of, judges came under a different category. Mr. Abellino, the sick leave, all right? We'll get that answer for you. I know the city manager will look at that, and you'll give Mr. Abellino a call?
As soon as I can, with the litigation available.
All right. Very happy, very happy that this police contract was settled. It's a tedious process. It's never easy to have negotiations on any police or fire contract, or any contract for that matter. As far as the comments about the state will deny us the opportunity to bond for our tax appeals, that's a possibility. I believe it's a small possibility. We've made enough changes, and we are approaching all the best practices that they're recommending and eliminating costly spending. The fact, even without the cap, if we were to go, if we didn't even meet their step obligation, which they're entitled to contractually, because we have 40-some-odd police officers in the step program right now, we wouldn't be able to give them even that. So I'm glad it went through. I feel we were obligated to get it through, and we're very happy. I know most of the council is that this went through. We wish, like Mrs. Canestrino said, we think the world of you guys, and we wish you the best. And I want to thank everybody for coming and have a safe trip home. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, before you close?
Yes.
I would like to thank the PBA for their cooperation in negotiating a really fair contract, I think, fair and for them and also for the city and the residents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to close, please.
Over.
Roll call.[1725.21]